We'll call the Henry County Commissioner meeting March 23, 2022 to order. We'll start with pledge of allegiance and then a prayer.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to watch over this war in Ukraine and be with those people, Lord. We ask you to bless our country and bless this county. And we ask you to watch over this meeting and have everything done in a way that's pleasing to you. In Jesus' name we ask it, amen.
Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes from last month's meeting?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Have the commissioners had the opportunity to review the claims?
Make a motion to accept the claims as presented.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Have the commissioners had the opportunity to review payroll?
Make a motion to approve payrolls presented.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Corey is not going to be here tonight. So next we have, Joe, do you want to come up and talk about the, because the first thing we have is the grant, so you just want to come up and talk about the award of the 57, or 572,000? Okay.
Last November, I applied for a federal aid grant to NDOT, and it was for sign replacement in the four western townships. We already have grants for the eastern and central townships, so I asked for one for the western to finish the county out. We just received notification last week that it was approved. The total amount is 572,497 dollars and eighty-seven cents, and that is at ninety percent. So the reimbursement's ninety percent. And they will pay also, that's for construction, and they will also pay for the design and, ninety percent of the design and ninety percent of the inspection. So I, I have to have a meeting with NDOT to get this started. I have to, what they call, go out for proposals. And so as soon as I have that meeting, we'll get things moving.
While you're up there, you just want to go ahead and continue your stuff?
I agree.
Okay. I just figured since you're up there, might as well continue on and then we'll move on. So I can, while you're getting your stuff, because you'll be next anyway. We have reports for weights and measures, monthly report, the clerk's monthly report, and a report from IDM. Do I have a motion to accept these reports?
Make a motion to accept the reports as presented.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
What I just passed out was the map of the maintenance the highway intends to do this year, 2022. We're a little over budget on this amount, so we're going to try to get as close as we can before we run out of money. I do not have the community crossing matching grant funds that were asked for. I won't know that until probably late next month, maybe. They said late April or early May, earlier the better so I can get a bid. This, what you see here is between 2.9 million and $3 million worth of work. And asphalt prices keep going up, so that may have to be cut back even more. And I would like to thank Taylor and the GIS department for putting this together. And the poster size there also, she did a good job. No, the one right there, yeah.
I will say it's nice to have these hung up in the commissioner's office when somebody calls about a road. It's, we have referenced it many times.
I use it in the office when I get a call. So the other item is closure of State Road 103. It's my understanding Steve attended a meeting the other day, and my understanding the closure starts next week. Is that right, Steve? April 1st. Okay, so it, the closure is going to be, well, it's between State Road 38 and State Road, or US 36. So it goes from Broad Street up to just south of 200 North. And there's a bridge there just south on Little Blue River, and they're going to repair the deck and do an overlay on that bridge. I reviewed the plans this afternoon. There's going to be some, some minor overlay. They're going to mill some asphalt off the road between those two points, and there's going to be some storm sewer installed in the city there north of Broad Street. And I think it's down the center of the road. So this was brought to my attention last year, and they were wanting an unofficial detour. Well, they wanted to use 200 North. And I contacted the DOC, and DOC said, no, we don't want all that traffic coming by that prison. And I'm sure Rick doesn't need all that by the jail either. So, so I told him, no, that's, that can't happen. So we, we told them to use 300 North going to the west. So as far as I know, that's the plan. I was not invited to the pre-construction conference, so I'm going to have to contact somebody and make sure that is in the plan, because I want those barricades set at 300 North, not at 200 North.
So how long is this going to be? What's the, the length of the project? Do you know?
I do not know.
Sixty days? Okay.
That quick?
I remember we talked about this last year. I guess I just assumed that the project got done last year. I, once we talked, because we kind of talked about this in one of the, I don't remember when. I know we talked about it. I just assumed that it was a done deal already. So.
It takes a while.
It takes a while, yeah. Okay.
So, so the, the thing is that it, if it's okay, and Rick's all right with it, close 200 North with barricades at 103 so we don't get that traffic coming down there, okay? So, so that's my plan. We'll, the highway will set up barricades to keep them out, or try.
I'm okay with that. You guys all right with that?
Well, my concern is when we open the jail, is that going to hinder traffic flow for the sheriff's department before that project's done, if that's barricaded where you guys can't get through? Mostly because I worried if a train's coming and you, they get a call and they can't get out without going down 50, then I'd like for them to be able to get out some way.
We, we've noticed that someone's been closing the gate there by the bridge.
It, it has been closed for a while. It will, it's going to open back up when we open the jail, right, Rick?
Right.
Okay. 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 Okay, we'll get the barricades up and, and get that, get that straightened out. And, and if you see a lot of traffic coming that way, let me know. We'll try to do something else, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Okay. Debbie, do you have anything? ARCA search, yeah. And I know that Joel has reviewed this and made changes, and they've made all the requested changes that you requested, Joel?
That's true.
Yes, okay. Okay, so the estimated project is 100, this is to digitize the commissioner's records, auditor, and the council records. Is that correct, Debbie? All of those for an estimated price of 189,452 dollars, with an annual fee of 1,886 dollars for the Compass Eclipse Research System annual fee for the second year, and standalone research site for the second year of the commissioner's minutes of 1,799 dollars. Do I have a motion to accept this contract? And these were, these funds were appropriated out of the ARP money.
I make a motion to accept this contract.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I did see, Debbie, that they would work 24 hours a day, seven days a week here. Okay? What's the, what's the dollar total for all of that? Okay, so we have the three contracts for digitizing the surveyors, the planning, and the section corners, for a total of, planning and zoning. So the total is 236,829 dollars. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve those contracts.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And again, that is coming out of the ARP funds as well. Sheriff, do you have anything?
Just our ribbon cutting on 30.
On 30? Yep, we have the Henry, the official name is the Henry County Sheriff's Office and Detention Center, is that correct? I've been calling it the Henry County Correctional Facility, and one of the, either one of the architectures or somebody had a heart attack, because they're like, that's not what we have. So the Henry County Sheriff's Office and Detention Center Open House is Wednesday, March 30th at three, or the ribbon cutting, excuse me, is at three o'clock on Wednesday, March 30th, with the Open House from four to six to follow. So everyone is invited. I think all county employees received an invitation and then written mailed invitations were sent out to specific people, I believe. I think, I think yours was mailed as well. So everyone is welcome to come and see the, the beautiful new, as I want to call it, the Rick McCorkle Henry County Sheriff's. Welcome to come out. Mr. Green?
Yep, that is. Yeah, before you, a rezone request by Coal Alliance Cooperative Avon, Indiana, to rezone 3.75 acres of land that's now farm ground, currently zoned general business. They would like that rezoned to agricultural. This ground's never been used for general business as it was zoned for at one time. There are some pending site improvements. After that, Coal Alliance plans to use most of that area for the storage of liquid fertilizer. The Planning Commission met December 16th of 2021 to consider the change in zoning requests by Coal Alliance, and at that same meeting, they approved the commission approved use for the storage and distribution of liquid fertilizer from that property pending rezoning approval. Votes favoring the rezone and the CAU passed 6 to 0.
Do either of you have any questions regarding this?
Was there a hearing from the public? Any, nobody complained?
No, nobody said anything.
Oh, they're, all the notifications, all the notifications went out, everybody were notified. I don't believe anybody showed up at the Planning Commission meeting.
Yeah, nobody showed up there.
Mm-mm, nope. Ed, do you have any questions? Does anybody in the public have any questions or concerns? I have a motion.
Make a motion to accept it as presented.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Do you have anything else? Three, and Steve, I'll let you talk about these, since you were the one that was working with them. We have three quotes from Jake's Heating and one from MRS for furnaces in the Henry County building, what we refer to as the Masonic Building.
Yeah, we have, MRS gave a quote for heating. They gave three quotes on a, what they call silver, gold, and platinum. So the quotes range just on furnaces, and that's to replace all four furnaces from 12,200 up to 15,500. And then we got quotes from Jake's Heating and Cooling to just replace the four furnaces only was 16,56. If we do the heating and air same time is 26,884 for all four, high efficiency with the, I believe they were a 10-year warranty on parts, and I think it was five years, I believe, on labor. And those quotes also include what they call a COVID treatment for, in the duct with the self-cleaning ion generator for induct HVAC units, for a total cost of 2196, what they were throwing in on all four furnaces free. So there would have been no additional cost for adding that.
This 1,800 for COVID treatment, if we do all four furnaces, doesn't, is not?
It's, if we do all four furnace.
That's included in that?
It's included in it.
Okay, so this is just a separate?
Yes.
If we do all four furnace? And then the, so four furnaces only versus the full system? Is that what we're looking at?
In, in my opinion, yes. To me, from a financial standpoint, because those units are 26 years old, I believe. One of them is completely shot. They said if we wanted to, we could probably knock one unit off and not replace it. It would be, might get a couple more years out of it before it lets go. It would be my recommendation that probably should just go ahead while they're here and do all four of them, be done with it, and replace complete systems.
So the difference with MRS replacing all four, is there stuff in Jake's that's not in MRS's quotes?
Yes. Jake's furnaces are a better quality furnace, and the warranty's better on them, from what I could see.
And does MRS not include air conditioning? It's just?
They did not have air conditioning on theirs. They just did the furnaces. So
Okay, so Jake's is furnace and air.
If you want to do furnaces only, theirs was a top-line furnace, and the total for all four furnaces was 16,56. These were 120,000 BTU furnaces, 95% efficient. And of course, all of theirs were same way. But the big difference I saw was the warranty went from a year to 10 years.
So MRS's warranty is just a year, and Jake's is 10 years?
Yes.
Is there, do we, and Steve, you might be able to answer this question as well. Is, is there anything wrong with the air conditioning units?
Other than age?
Oh, you're shaking your head?
No, I'm just saying age. They just said with, they're probably not going to be compatible with, with them replacing, having to change everything. So it was going to be cheaper, several thousand dollars cheaper if they do it all at one time than if they don't, but...
No, we've excluded you completely.
I'll say his was the one that has the hole in the heat exchanger. I was impressed with Jake's when they showed up. They put a camera in there. We've been throwing parts at this from MRS, and the furnace kept shutting down. They were there for a few minutes, came down, and had a hole in one of the secondary exchanger and a crack in the first one. And so I was pleased with the fact that they went above and beyond, in my opinion, to figure out what was wrong with it.
Okay, so Jake's has the, all four furnaces plus air conditioning plus a 10-year warranty. MRS's replacing the four furnaces does not include air conditioning and is only a one-year warranty for 15,500. Jake's is air conditioning, 10-year warranty, and all the furnaces for 26,284 dollars. Is that what I'm looking at?
And, and that includes air.
And that includes air conditioning.
And one-year parts and labor, 10-year, or one-year labor warranty and 10-year parts warranty.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Or is there any discussion? Ed, do you have any questions? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We allowed Jake's Heating and Cooling to put the four furnaces and air, including their COVID filter system treatment, all at the same time.
Total is 26,284, right? Yeah, I will second that motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, Steve, I'm going to let you talk about this one as well. This is for repair work at the Saddle Club, I believe, from damage from a storm.
Yeah, there was two estimates given on two of the roofs over at the Saddle Club, the café, and that's for metal and the office roof and overhang. They have a bunch of shingles that are missing off those roofs. We have two estimates, one for 8,400 dollars from D and D Concrete, and one from its Rich West Circle W Construction out of Markville for cover of the shingled roof and overhang with rib metal, and the office building for 7,835 dollars. I would recommend that we approve the 7, 835 for doing the work.
And this is from an insurance claim?
This is from an insurance claim from this, well, actually it's from last spring. There was miscommunication between the park, the Saddle Club, and me on whether those buildings were included or not, and whether there was enough money left in that to go ahead and cover that expense. So I make a motion to go ahead and get it fixed.
So you have a motion to use Rich West Circle W Construction for 7,835 dollars. Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Well, now we're down to the bicentennial time capsule. So the commissioners have been asked to come up with something to go into the time capsule that will be replaced on June the 4th, or digging up the current time capsule that was buried, I believe, 50 years ago. And so I think that would be appropriate. The biggest thing that we seem to have worked on this year is the new jail, that if we take a picture of the old jail, a picture of the new jail, a copy of our invitation and a copy of the pamphlet regarding the ceremonies, and place that in the time capsule for them to open 50 or 100 years from now. Unless anybody can come up, or we can add more things besides that, but I think that's probably the, one of the largest things that we have been working on for the last year and a half.
I think since we're doing pictures, it wouldn't be too hard. We can, I think we have pictures of the two prior existing jails. We can, I think we have pictures of the two prior existing jails.
Oh, okay.
So we could put...
The progression of the jails.
Pictures of all the jails we've had in Henry County into that.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Wouldn't be much more trouble.
Yeah, I like that.
I was going to say I have two fan blades that fell off that fan this afternoon. We could put in there if you want to.
Uh, Ricky, are you okay with that going into the time capsule? All right. Uh, I don't believe we need to make a motion or vote on that, but just a kind of discussion of what we're going to do.
I do have, if it's all right with the sheriff, their Kevin Orm would like before we move out of the old jail, he asked if it was possible if he could come look at the old jail and the new jail to see what, how far we were upgrading. And I told him I would get with you. And I asked him that, and once I got back with you to find out what a good time would be, we can set that up if you're okay with it. Okay, thank you.
So we also have an opening on the Board of Zoning Appeals, but did you find out, Tom, if that's a council appointment or a commissioner appointment? Okay, so I think we need to just table, table that for now because there's some confusion as to whether it's a council appointment or a commissioner appointment. So we don't want to bring that in. So I get to read a very long thing again. This is the Notice of Acceptance of Offers for Purchase of Real Estate. This is for the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Indiana, pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-11-4.2. Is accepting written offers for the purchase of the real property commonly known as 1130-1132 Broad Street, Newcastle, Indiana, 47362. Parcel number 030-47514-00 for the sum of no less than $33,500 by developer that must agree to improve the structure located on the real estate and develop the real estate for commercial office or retail use or for mixed commercial and residential use. The real estate is improved with a multi-story building. The real estate is subject to the Newcastle City zoning and is currently Zone C2. The real estate is being sold in its as-is condition and without any representation or warranty of any type or kind. Henry County will be entitled to possession of the real estate for a period of up to 60 days after closing in order to remove records and other personal properties stored on the real estate. All offers must be in writing and delivered to the Board of Commissioners, Henry County, Indiana, 101 South Main Street, Newcastle, Indiana, 47362. No later than April 27th, 2022 at 4:00 p.m. All offers should be delivered in a sealed envelope that is marked 1130-1132 Broad Street. An offer must clearly identify the offerer, including its name and address, and provide the name, telephone number, and email address of a contact person. If the offer, offerer is an entity, the offer must indicate the names and addresses of all principals, members, partners, shareholders, or other individuals with a direct or indirect ownership, ownership interest in the entity. An offer must also clearly state the offering price and must provide in narrative form a detailed description of the offer's intended use for the real estate. Included within the description, the offerer should identify and describe all improvements that will be made to the real estate, the estimated investment that will be made in improving the real estate, the timeframe within which, within which improvements will be completed, and a description of why the offerer believes the project will further the development of Henry County, Indiana, and promote the effective use of the real estate. The offer should identify any contractors that will be retained to perform the work and describe the offer's experience in the redevelopment of similar properties. Upon request, an offer shall provide information regarding the experience of any contractor the offer intends to utilize to improve the real estate. The offerer should also identify any other real estate owned by the offerer or its principals in Henry County, include a description of any improvements made to the properties by the offerer or its principals, and indicate whether the offerer or any of its principals, including any entity in which the principal had an ownership interest during the last five years, have been, have been subject to foreclosure proceedings, have transferred property in lieu of a foreclosure proceeding, or have otherwise defaulted on any loan made for the purpose of redeveloping real property. The Board of Commissioners of Henry County shall open and consider any offers received during its regular meeting on April 27th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. All offers will be opened for public inspection. The Board of Commissioners may reject any offers and may award a contract for the purchase of the real estate to the best offer that meets or exceeds the minimum price above. In determining the best offer, the Board of Commissioners will consider the following factors. One, the size, character, and nature of the improvements or repairs proposed to be made by the offerer. Two, the offerer's plans and ability to improve the real estate with reasonable progress. Three, the time in which it will take to complete the repairs or improvement. Four, the sum of the proposed purchase price. Five, whether the real estate, when improved, will be sold or rented. Six, the offerer's history in developing and improving properties similar to the real estate. Seven, any factors that will assure the Board of Commissioners that the sale will further the development of Henry County and best serve the interest of the community from the standpoint of both human and economic welfare. An offer submitted by a trust, as defined by Indiana Code 30-4-1-1A, must identify each, one, the beneficiary of the trust, and two, settler empowered to revoke or modify the trust. The real estate may not be sold or conveyed to a person who is ineligible to purchase the real estate under the provisions of Indiana Code 36-1-11-16. The contract with a successful offerer will require the offerer to improve and redevelop the real estate within specified timeframes and in accordance with its offer. The contract may provide for the deposit of surety bonds, the making of good faith deposits to secure performance, liquidated damage if the improvements are not completed in a timely and satisfactory manner, the right of repurchase by Henry County if the improvements are not completed in a timely and satisfactory manner, and provide for other rights and remedies in favor of Henry County if the real estate is not improved in a timely and satisfactory manner in accordance with the contract. After opening and considering, after opening and consideration of written offers, the Board of Commissioners may engage in negotiations with one or more offerers and may enter into a contract for the sale of the real estate. All sales will be subject to the buyer entering, entering into a written contract for the purchase and sale of the real estate that is satisfactory to the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners reserves the right to waive any irregularities, errors, or omissions in any offer received. To arrange inspection of the real estate, please contact the Board of Commissioners at 765-529-4705. Do I have a motion? Please don't make me read that again. We've got one more. The one for the Hope Building, I think, is May, uh... The first May meeting.
And I make a motion. We approve both of them then.
Do I need to read the one for the Hope Building? Okay.
It's obviously has the address of the Hope Building, otherwise it's...
It's all the same. Okay.
I'll say, do we need to announce that purchase price since we're approving both or we need to...
I think it's 100 and...
I can go ahead and look it up.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know if somebody would say, "We didn't tell us how much that one would be."
I think it's 139 pounds. Want to amend your motion?
Well, I make a motion that we include both pieces of property, terms set forth by our county attorney, and the prices set forth within each agreement.
And the, yeah, the one for the Hope Building is $132,000 located at 1426 Broad. Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I would just say that, uh... I think we got exactly what we wanted here. We wanted to have offers that we could accept or reject and try to give Newcastle the type of developer or contractor that would do something good for the downtown area. And with everything you wrote in here, I think we will certainly be able to do that, so.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. So now we're on to Resolution 2022-03-23008. A resolution amending Henry County's written plan for the expenditure of the coronavirus local recovery funds. Has anything changed in the resolution? It's just the exhibit, has changed? Okay, so the Exhibit A, everything is in the resolution. We, we just modify the exhibit as we go along and appropriate more things. So the written plan for expenditure of funds received through the coronavirus local recovery fund, and I'll go ahead and read the ones that we've already approved and then added. The sums received by Henry County, Indiana, from the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund shall be utilized for the following purposes. Up to $1 million for the cost of legal and financial advisory services. Up to $1 million to contribute to the cost of a new sanitary sewer line that will serve the Henry County Jail. Up to $600,000 to provide premium pay to certain eligible employees of Henry County, subject to the terms of a salary ordinance adopted by the Henry County Council. $10,000 as a hiring bonus for new employees accepting employment as jail officers at the Henry County Jail and rehabilitation center after the facility is opened. $50,000 to retain an employee whose job duties will consist of selecting and writing grant applications on behalf of Henry County, in part to obtain additional funds for purpose of addressing the negative effects of COVID-19. $400,000 to obtain one or more ambulances for the use of Henry County Emergency Medical Service. $8,700 to obtain an assessment of the physical condition of certain buildings owned by Henry County for the purpose of determining any necessary modifications or repairs to the buildings, including repairs or modifications necessary to respond to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19. Up to $170,000 for repairs and improvements to the HVAC and ventilation systems at the Henry County Justice Center. Up to $750,000 for digitizing records of the Board of Commissioners, County Council, County Auditor, and County Surveyor. And here's the new ones. Up to $163,000 for the staffing of the jail chemical addiction program, including the retention of a director, counselor, and part-time administrative assistant. Up to $47,387 for the acquisition of a new Chevrolet Tahoe and related equipment to allow the vehicle to be used by a K-9 officer in the Henry County Sheriff's Department. And this one is the one that we have allocated lost revenues to instead of the COVID or the ARP. Uh, up to $145,495.25 for the acquisition of body worn cameras, software and service for use by road officers, court officers, and reserve officers in the Henry County Sheriff's Department. Note, the cumulative amount to date allocated solely as replacement of lost revenue is $47,387 in Item 11 above. And I will note that all purchasing procedures and procurement that are requirements by the county still have to be followed with any of these. Many times there's just a single source, but if there's more than a single source, multiple quotes will have to be obtained. Is that, that, that covers it all? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We adopt the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Rita, I forgot you for Park Board. I'm so sorry. You don't have anything? Okay. Do I have, do I get everybody? Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Oh, I do have. So, uh, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and Safe at Home is requesting to place some sort of visual representation, whether it's luminaries or some other visual representation in order to raise awareness to sexual assault, the awareness of sexual assault. So they came and asked us today. So with that, do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We allow them to put something on the courthouse lawn as they've done in the past.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Anybody have anything else they want to say or talk about? Nope, nope. Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Meaning adjourned. Thank you very much.